Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and roll call.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community. And I'll do roll call. Candace is late, I guess, with notice. I am here. Deb?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Danielle is absent with notice. And Margaret?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our first item on our presentation is the fiscal 2023 general fund final budget.
Present. Tammy.
Okay, so you received a lot of documents in your Word packet. Thank you.
Thank you. So instead of trying to go through very long documents put together on PowerPoint, to try to summarize things for you, and if you have questions along the way, please let me know. On purpose of the budget hearing, we have to discuss the millage rates that were approved on the L-4029 that support the budgets that we're going to be testing in a little bit. And then to actually discuss those budgets, and I will include both the final budget for '22, '23, and the new budget for '23, '24. So on '22, '23, L-4029 millage rate request that you approved at the June 12 meeting. General Fund operating millage, we're requesting 17.9244 mills, which has been rolled back by Headley from 18 mills. Have the same millage as last year. There's no further rollback for this year, but it can roll back in upcoming years. So far, the loss revenue for last year was about $13,000, and this year it's closer to $14,000. So in total, it's probably around $27,000 for the two years. Something that you may want to consider in the future, if it rolls back, continues to roll back, is the millage over ride election. But at this point, for that amount of money, I think we're fine for now. The state aid is in our... is supported by, assuming we're going to collect all 18 mills, so our per pupil foundation assumes we collect all 18 mills, and they subtract that 18-mill levy from what we get from our 458... I'm sorry, $9,608 per pupil times our blended enrollment, which we're protecting next year, $1,553.78. For debt, we're requesting 6.95 mills. And what we can levy for debt is what is needed to pay our principal and interest on our outstanding bonds. So our revenue generated from property taxes is about $4.5 million, and our net exchange charges are $4.3 million. So we have a little to look down the road to see where we want to go with here. On the general fund budget, you have two resolutions for the general fund budget. The first one is the original budget, two amended budgets, and the final budget for '22, '23. In our March amendment, our estimated general fund revenues were just over $22 million. Now they're at $23.3 million. Why? Here we go. Local revenues actually decreased about $83,000. Property tax revenues went down because of changes in our taxable values during the appeals process for tax values. So that does happen. We had a decrease in childcare revenues of about $18,000. Remember, we have that childcare stabilization fund, and we did give credits to parents toward their childcare costs. So that affects our revenues. And then we had a decrease in... I'm sorry, preschool tuition of about $26,000. On the flip side, state revenue increased about $1 million. And part of that increase was the per pupil foundation increased about $71,000. And that's part of that offset when the property taxes go down. Because that 18-mill number drops, that increase is what we get from the state. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Then we had a grant that's called MIPsers One-Time Deposit, and that totaled $879,000. So the state sends us that money in a state aid payment. And then we turn around and pay into MIPsers as part of paying against the retirement plan. So there's an increase in the revenues and expenditures to reflect that $879,000. We also expect an increase in our offset, another MIPsers offset, and defined contribution of about $76,000. In this case, it's because our retirement rate has gone up, and then the state has a cap. So anything above that, that we pay above that cap, they reverse us as what they call the offset. So that is expected to increase in our final budget. Federal revenues also increased about $365,000. The biggest chunk of that is SRR3. We were planning to do some purchases next year for technology. We were able to do that this year. So we have to increase both the revenue and the expenditure to reflect that increase in the expenditures. And so we have one more year left on SRR3. We're in the middle year, SRR2. So we're allowed, we can do that. So we'll reduce next year's grant for SRR3 by that early purchase issue. So SRR2 is done. SRR2 is done at the end of this year, yes. We actually have until September to spend the money, but we've spent it. We also added what's called 98C per pupil learning loss grade revenue expenditures, totaling around $79,000. That is per day. Working hard on that. We'll use that for some summer school program costs to purchase some invisions and accelerated reader programs and do some learning-focused professional development. We also have a small grant called the American Rescue Plan Homeless Education for Children and Youth Grant. It totals about $6,000. That is to assist homeless children by buying clothing, toiletries, laundry soap, laundry gift cards to go to the laundromat, and then some childcare and any transportation costs they might need, or some prepaid cell phones so they can communicate. And then we also have a $22,000 health resource advocate grant. That's a federal grant, but it's passed through a home ISD. So we learned about that maybe in February, something like that, that we're getting March, that we're getting that money passed through a home ISD. And that's three versus four costs like cleaning, extra cleaning, things like that related. Still related to COVID funding. And the last item that affects our revenues in the general fund is estimated indirect costs that we are charging the Food Service Fund for paying bills, hiring, payroll, that kind of thing. The actual cost of payroll and any food purchase to go to the Food Service Fund, obviously. But this is the indirect cost that you have to see, like my time, Brian's time, Jamie's time, payroll time, that type of thing. We based it on last year originally, which is $44,000. Last year, we had universal free breakfast and lunch for all students. So that increased our participation, increased our direct costs, so also increased our indirect costs. This year, '22, '23, that program went away, we're back to normal. So then our participation went down somewhat, and so that reflects also in the indirect cost. Questions on that? Okay. Under the expenditures for the amended budget, we went from just under $22 million to $23.3 million. Remember, the $879,000 of the MIPsers. So that is spread over all of the non-grants, non-special education function codes in our budget that have payroll. So it includes basic programs, which are your elementary, middle school, high school, preschool, counseling, media center, technology, superintendent's office, the principal's office, business office, operations, transportation, HR, athletics, and childcare. So that's spread throughout the budget in different lines. If you were to look at that comparison sheet with the multi-columns, and you look at retirement, you'll see large increases in all of those areas, depending on the size of the payroll in that area. We also increased the middle school and high school capital outlay for the classroom remeals. That was part of our SRR3 funding that we did, we were able to get that done this year. So it moves it out of next year into this year. So the revenues there now moves to the expenditures in high school and middle school. And it was a rough year personnel. We increased our substitute costs by about $150,000. And also increased operations for... this would be under personals, it's our professional services for the lawn. It's not removal. And then under supplies, we're heating fuel and custodial supplies. Custodial supplies, when we did the budget, it was kind of a shot in the dark because we didn't privatize someone, and those companies bought all the supplies. So this is kind of making sure that we're covering what we're spending this year. So bottom line for the amendment is we're projecting to add $24,808 to fund balance, which isn't a big change. You wonder, why do we have to go through all these calculations to do a budget amendment for such a small change? It's because of the auditors come in, and we haven't budgeted by function properly. Then they give us a note in our statement that's saying we exceeded budgets by the function level, which is what you see on your resolutions. So we had to fix it, get everything in the right category, right function. It leaves our general fund balance projected at $1,753,000 to begin the '23, '24 year, which is 7.5% of revenues. And what they call the old early warning calculation, which is revenues minus restricted revenues, which takes out breaks, basically. And so you have a smaller revenue number as your divisor, and you're still fighting the same fund balance number. So fund balance under the old early warning was 10.93. I believe now, with personnel changes at the state, they're using 7.5. Any questions on the amendment? Okay, moving right along. The new budget, which is the second resolution in your packet, is for the '23, '24 budget projections. We presented over the last several months our blended count of 1,005,5378 students, and the foundation expected to increase by $458 to $9,608. We also expect, because our retirement rate has gone up again above that cap that the state has put in, we're expecting additional $157,000 from the state for that cost. And there's a categorical for special education revenues. We're expecting that to increase about $62,000. And the enhancement knowledge that was approved by the home ISD, expected to increase about $40,000.
What year are we in that?
Three, I think.
Is this our third, or going to be the third?
It was passed in 2020.
2020 was passed, so it was lifted in July of 2021, '22. This is the fourth collection.
So we're in year three, this will be the...
Of the 10 years.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And except for the expiring SRR2 grant and that MIPsers One-Time Deposit, all the current revenues expenditures are at the levels that they're in the current budget. We also projected and talked about increases in salaries and wages due to contract settlements, and that affects by category retirement, because they're a percentage of wages. So due to contract settlements, it's in total of all the categories that we had on that list, it's about $600,000. And we did a couple of cost reductions. We have a voluntary severance payout that is expiring, that saves us about $10,000. And then we have this. We have an online alternative position that we're planning to reduce. Because we were sorcaining in custodial, we asked people to clean our offices, those who wanted to do that. And then we eliminated purchasing flight poles and football helmets that were done this year. And that saves us about $75,000. And we have increasing expenditures of $75,500 for the categories that we talked about, that you wanted to increase the money for athletic supplies and uniforms. And you'll find that in that big column under athletics. Marching band and choir uniforms. Right now, it's off under high school, because I assume most of the time we buy high school stuff and pass that out to middle school. But if we do buy new for the middle school, we'll just adjust the budget in a minute. And then new instrument purchases as well. And then we added a confidential secretary position. And we're continuing the set of sides that we started. We're at $402,408, which is the same in the amended budget and this new budget. $100,000 for cost replacement, which we paid money increase because less is costing more, like $130,000 now. Turf replacement, laptop replacement, computer replacement, cafeteria replacement, and file servers, et cetera. So that last $100,000 was primarily file servers, but it can be broken down into other things. So $402,000 set aside is pretty good. So at the end of June of '24, a year from now, we're expecting our fund balance to increase by about $17,880, and take our... take the total to $1,771,622, which is a little increase in 7.95% of revenues, and the early warning old calculation is 10.78. And as our revenues go down, when those SRR funds follow, you'll see that number rebound, that percentage, because our revenues will increase. Any questions on that? Okay. Adjusted the general fund. The other funds, I was just going to go over the resolutions for you. So you had a resolution for debt service, and we talked about that. Our revenues for this year are at $4.3 million. Next year, going to total $4.6 million. Our expenditures, which we pay principal, interest, any tax refunds, rebates that come along because of the tax valuation appeal process, and then any debt fees. So we pay... we pay a bank to pay our bondholders. They charge us $500 per bond issued to do that for us, so that also comes out of the debt. So total, our debt fund expenditures remain at just under $4.2 million for this year. And next year, we'll be at $4.3 million. And which leaves our fund balance and the debt fund projected this year at $424,000, and next year at $659,000. Any questions on that? Then you have a resolution for food service. Food service has been interesting because we've had so many different programs through COVID and after COVID. This year is our first, what I would call, normal year. But still kind of not normal, because we're still coming out of COVID and people are adjusting, trying to get to a normal life, whatever that looks like. So again, the numbers would be put in the original budget, are kind of fluent. So in our final budget, our original budget showed revenues in the Food Service Fund of $543,000. We've increased that to just under $735,000. Expenditures, we originally budgeted at $717,000, and for the final amendment, at $752,000, which is... actually, we'll use $17,000 of our fund balance. And our fund balance wound up at $483,000 as of the end of this year, June 30. We have an excess fund balance, so our plan is to spend that down. The state requires that we can only have three months of operating expenditures in our fund balance. So next year is where we're going to do the spend down. You improved major purchase of some equipment at the last meeting, so that's been ordered. Hopefully, that'll be in July or August, and we'll get that ready to go. So that affects the '23, '24 budget. For '23, '24, we're highly conservative. So our estimated revenues at this point are $683,000. Our expenditures are at $917,000. And keep in mind that includes $140-some-thousand of equipment that we're buying. It also incorporates all the raises and pay increases that we had in personnel. We added one more person into the food service program. So next year's fund balance starts at $483, July 1 of this year, and we're expected to finish at $249,000, and that takes care of our excess fund balance. Any questions on food service?
So that extra person that Tammy mentioned, we put in what's called a floater position. It's a cook that goes between, and then when we have someone out, we use that floater to backfill. So it's basically a sub-on call at all times, because we had so many absences and just tries. So it was another way of us trying to make sure we had the staff. It has actually worked out very well, because a lot of the floaters have moved into the permanent position, where they come available and we backfill the floater positions.
The other thing that we're trying to do with food services, do some of that homemade cooking, and do some of that soup and that kind of stuff, so that gives the kids a little more variety. And that does take that extra person to help out in the kitchens to make that happen. The last one we have is an interesting one, the Student School Activity Fund, which is all of our internal accounts that they have in high school, middle school, and elementary. So high school, you have all of your athletic teams. You have your class of '23, '24, '25, and so on. But we have to approve a budget for it. So this year's budget, we started at $228,000 estimated revenues, which means that's how much money all those groups collect, and we put in the banking account for them to pay out later. We decreased that to $222,000, and then for next year, we increased it back to $228,000. It really is kind of proprietary, because we've been doing it long, we don't have a big history. So hopefully, one more year, and it'll get a little bit easier to predict the budget. Expenditures are a little more. We started at $204,000, was our estimate. We're actually at around $227,000, and for next year, we're expecting it to go to $238,000. So they're limited. We keep an eye on those accounts. So anytime a check request comes through, we're making sure they have money in their respective accounts to be able to spend it. So even though you may see the balance go down, we do not let them go to negative or overspending. They may do it temporarily for timing while they're doing fundraising, but that's... that happens very frequently. Any questions on the student school activities? Any other questions on any of the budgets that we talked about? Well, as you... now, as you think about them or call those questions, please don't hesitate. Contact me, and we have to answer any questions that you have. Do you have anything, Dan?
No, I'd just like to thank you, Tammy, and your team for all the work. This is a lot to put together for the details and making sure, so I appreciate it. All of the funds are in a positive, healthy margin of district as they have been the years past. So thank you.
Thank you, team. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. This time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? Having no public comments, the board, having no further business, is going to adjourn at 6:51. Board, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and take roll call.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community. Candace?
Here.
I am here. Deb?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Danielle is absent with notice. And Margaret?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Do I have support? Thank you, Mr. Wormsley.
In your packet, you have the reservations and recommendations for hire. I'll start with the reservations. Joanne Ballard, PM Custodian resigned. That position is currently posted. Kayla Charlevoix resigned as fourth grade teacher. Anthony Gillespie resigned as fifth grade... fourth grade teacher, excuse me. Erin Gillespie resigned as fifth grade teacher. Charlevoix is going to interpay, and the Gillespi's are going to... Mrs. Jones, Angela Jones resigned as the eighth grade volleyball coach. Dawn McCard resigned as Director of Student Sports Services. She is actually moving to the ISD to be a... to work with the Special Education Department, the ISD. Sarah Patstution resigned as the seventh grade volleyball coach. Linda Speakup resigned as the fourth grade teacher. Today, these are the new hires. Jessica Bowman has been hired as a special education teacher. Her assignment will be at the elementary school. Nicole Cecil has been hired as a social worker. Her assignment will also be at the elementary school. Ms. Perry will be moving to the middle school. Today, there's a couple that have asterisks on there, so I'm going to identify. Ms. Han Lenahan accepted the fourth grade position. Hunter Hill, we are pending the final certification for the science teacher. He's one of our hashtag teach. Nicole Hutchinson, fifth grade teacher, to replace Mrs. Gillespie. She has accepted. We have two bus drivers, Marian McIntyre and Lisa Procopio. Lisa was a former bus driver, but the hours in the new thing has brought her back. So I believe at this time, we have all of our bus drivers, plus the turtle. Kayla Rodriguez is the... we were working with her to finish the hashtag teach. She was the high school math teacher. She has not yet officially accepted, because there's still some things she has to finish on the certification to get it posted with the state. Sandra Rush, fourth grade teacher, has accepted the position. Mackenzie Schulte has been offered the position, but not yet accepted. I anticipate that coming through. Shelby Selby, fourth grade teacher, has accepted the position. And Sandra Rush has also accepted the position for fourth grade teacher. Amy Zimmer, ELA teacher for the middle school, has also accepted the position. Good to go regarding that. I received no errors brought to my attention regarding this regular meeting on the 12th or on the 19th special meeting. Just to give you guys an update, this is what we have opening today. High school math teacher, which is still out there. That was true of Mr. Campbell, who resigned. We have a counselor position. This will be our third counselor paid out of the 31AA funds. We have a K-5 STEAM teacher that's open. Mrs. Gallagher moved to the middle school technology. We have that... they are interviewing candidates this week. We have a K-5 art teacher. Ms. Shannon moved to the high school. We have candidates that we are interviewing for that. The Director of Student Support Security, Matt Carr's position. We have about five applicants that have come in since Friday's post. We're always looking for lunch eights. We have an educational special ed pair pro that will actually be at the elementary school. Moving one assigned to the elementary to the high school. The old position for the secretary in my office. And we're always looking for bus drivers. And the last one is we have a third grade position open. But I know Mrs. Nager is doing interviews for that, so I would expect by the 14th, all of them will be manned. It's all... I expect to be filled. Math is our challenge.
So the middle school, just the counselor, that's it at this point?
The counselor is going to be split between the middle school and high school. But yes, that is it. Everything's been filled.
It's the extra counselor, it's already a counselor. Right, it's the extra, that's what I was going to ask.
So yeah, it's been built. So the people that are on the reservation ladder, we have already filled those vacancies. Special education, we have three. Number ones were Penny and... except for we wanted to do three special.
Good deal.
Very good shape.
Very good.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Wormsley? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our raves. Sandy? I do not have any. Angela?
I would just like to thank and recognize all the hard work through the summer school staff. Mrs. Staples was there, along with... I always struggle, Mrs. Shubhuber.
Shubhuber.
And also, I saw Mrs. Van Cooney there making appearances. So I just wanted to say thank you. And the students were very excited to be back at school in summer. And I know there's some traffic issues, there's some construction issues that the furs started a little bit of our power outage today, and you guys just handled it like it was a black. So just wanted to recognize those family members.
Honorable.
I just want to echo what Angela said. Lots of excitement out there about it. Kids talking about it in appearance, and just kudos, thank you. Thank you, Renee. It's just great.
Candace?
Exactly.
Sandy?
Thank you for all your hard work and organizing all that. The classes are fun. Both my kids love it. Also, thank you to the bus drivers for still working every day. As I was going to say, have to pick everyone up, so thank you.
Carolyn?
I really don't have anything, but I can tell you that my neighbors are loving it. So there's that, so that's awesome.
I just want to reinforce what everybody has said. All I've heard is really positive comments. So Renee, good job. Okay, next item on our agenda is our presentation from Mr. Trent. I'm going to make just a quick call for the board.
Before Mr. Trent begins, I know this will be done in a two-meeting process, but because there's a tight line of it on August 1st, we have to kind of give you the overview during the first part, and there's an action item. We don't have meetings in July, so we got a request to participate, to have HACDE as an object for our students to use as alternative versions.
Yeah, so I appreciate you guys hearing this today and putting it down as an action item because of that tight deadline. And it's something that Mr. Wormsley and I, as well as the people over at Lance Cruz, have been working to put this together. So kind of an overview, because I think this is the first time we've offered a program like this. like this. So, co-ops are pretty common in the MHSAA. What it is, is our students would play for Lance Cruz for hockey while still attending the school here in Richmond. So, what happens is because of the way the divisions are set in the MHSAA, if you've got a co-op team, you take out their enrollment. So, Lance Cruz, the team that we were asked to join is called Lance Cruz United, which is Lance Cruz and Lance Cruz North. Because they're two separate high schools, they have to have a co-op agreement to put their team, their schools together. So, their enrollment's already Lance Cruz plus Lance Cruz North, and then they would add our enrollment, which isn't uncommon in hockey. There's actually, last year in the MHSAA, there were 61 co-op programs in hockey. The reason why is hockey's more of one of those sports where, I mean, even in big schools like Lance Cruz, you struggle to get enough kids out to field a decent-sized team because there's a commitment, there's a time commitment, there's a financial commitment. And it's not a sport that kids just pick up in high school. I mean, most of the kids that play hockey have played since they could, they could get on the ice. So, how this all came about is back in September, I had a parent reach out to me about seeing if there was interest to join Anchor Bay. So, I just shot an email over to Anchor Bay and they said, "No, we're not interested." We like, there are some schools that like to keep their enrollment, it keeps them down in the division, which is fine. So, flash forward to the winter, I got approached by Mr. Oki and the coach over at Lance Cruz about us joining their co-op. And then there was some, so I gauged some interest with students. And there were a few students in the high school who were interested and have a background in hockey. They play hockey outside of the school for a club, for a club team. And so, I started, you know, working with Drake, Oki, the AD over at Lance Cruz about what it would take and how a co-op would look. So, again, what it would look like is our kids would play for Lance Cruz United. They would handle all of the facilities, all the coaching, eligibility and collection of physicals. I would provide them a copy of that, but also keep a copy for our records just in case. Pay to play. We would run this, although it's an MHSAA sport, in the eyes of the school, we would run it as a club, similar to trap and equestrian, where we wouldn't have a paid coach because the coach would be taken care of by the co-op. They don't collect pay to participate for hockey, Lance, they meaning Lance Cruz. But there is a fee the kids would pay, which is pretty common with hockey. It covers their gear and their ice time. And so, that fee would actually be set by Lance Cruz based on how many kids there are, and they would communicate that to us, we would get that to the kids. So, like I said, there were a couple, two high school kids that showed interest. And I also, this past week, had a parent reach out to me who had heard through the rumor mill that this was a possibility. And they were like, "Well, we'd like to bring our kids here if this is going to happen." So, I think this is a great way for the district not only to attract new students, but also to retain students that we have. We're able to offer them some of those big city, big school opportunities while still staying our small town, our small community as well. So, I, I think it would be a great thing for us to have to attract and retain students.
So, some, some of the rumors that were out there is we are having our own hockey.
Yeah, no.
This is a co-op, we're joining with another district that allows them.
Yep.
In your, in the action, and you'll see that the co-op agreement that would have to be approved by the board so that we can move forward with this.
Yep.
So, there's their, their...
Yes. So, they would practice and play out of the Motown Advice Arena. I think there's a couple of schools that play out of there.
At North Avenue and...
Rose Park.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Yes. Um, we can ask a question.
It's a 25-minute Google map drive.
So, who's bussing the kids then from, like, or is that just they have to have their...
They would, they would be responsible for getting to practice. And then all the travel to games would be coordinated through Lance Cruz.
So, basically, all we're doing is saying, "Yeah, we've got some kids that would like to play hockey with Lance Cruz, it's legal."
Yep.
It's okay.
Yep, and that's what the, the agreement in the packet is what I, it would get the signatures from Lance Cruz as well, and then it would go to the state and they would review it.
And then, is this something, is this an agreement, is it like an every-year thing?
So, yeah.
Or once we're in, we're in?
So, similar to the MHSAA resolution.
That we do every year.
Each year, yep, each year, I would bring this to you guys a lot sooner than this. And I would put that, I would give that to you guys and it would just be a rolling year-over-year thing.
And then for the eligibility?
Yep.
Whose eligibility are they?
Yes.
Ours or yours?
It would fall under ours.
Okay.
So, I would still run eligibility and I would get that information to them. I would just say, "Hey, these are the..." And it, I don't, I don't anticipate this being a, a big group of kids. I'm thinking five. But I would give that to them, say, "Hey, these kids are ineligible."
I just wondered to standards of who.
Yeah.
But do they have to try out for this?
Yeah.
Or is this, they want to, they fill in organs?
So, the, the way this came about is Lance Cruz approached me about it because their numbers had been, for hockey, had been slipping. And they were looking for ways to attract more kids and kind of deepen that bench on their team, so if kids aren't playing 40 minutes a night, I don't know how hockey works, but... So, yes, there would be a tryout for it.
A tryout, okay.
Yeah.
So, if they suddenly get an overwhelming amount in their own district, are we then like, "Oh, there's only a couple of spots?"
No, no, no. We would, we would be just as much a part of this team as they would. Because it's all...
Once we join the cooperative?
Yep.
We're, we're in?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So, until we choose to...
Allow me to...
Yeah.
Do they, so do they play during the season?
Yes, to be, to be the winter season.
Which, are we concerned at all? And I know this is, I've been pulling from our sports here.
I don't feel like we are, because of the small number of kids. And again, it being hockey, hockey kids are hockey kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
For lack of a better term.
Yeah.
So, there may be one or two kids that would have played another sport, but I don't think this is going to decimate...
A sport.
Another sport. Yep.
How about if there's any issues with the kids down there or something? It's all handled by the coaching staff down there? Do they have a...
Yeah, and I would, um, I've got a good, their coach, John Nader's wife teaches here. And I have a really good working relationship with John. And we would set that, set that precedent, not precedent, we'd set that process up for that. If there are issues, I would, if there are issues concerning our kids, I would expect them to communicate that to me. And I would handle it just like if it was an issue in our gym with one of our solo teams.
Do you find a chance to know what the average is?
I think they said last year it was, yeah, I think they said last year it was 3,000. But I think they said if there's more kids, it goes down, which...
That's normal for hockey. Well, I don't want to face the parents for hockey.
And that's also another reason, to speak to your earlier question, that's another reason I don't think we're going to get kids just out of the hall. I don't want to try hockey this year. I mean, if they do, great, there's that option, but...
What we're doing is we're affording kids that play hockey and love the sport...
Yes.
To be able to play it at the high school level for somebody, and you don't have a team.
And still stay here with us.
Absolute, yep. It's a win-win.
This is really close to me, because my son was a hockey player.
Okay.
And we almost did new school of choice when he went to school here. And we ended up not doing that, but, you know, it would, it, it would have never been an issue, you know what I'm saying? Like, we tried so hard and it was just really difficult for him, because then they didn't have like a group of friends, you know what I mean? A group of friends or whatever, because hockey kids are hockey kids. And it's a huge commitment and they're always there, you know what I'm saying? So, I think that this not only may bring kids here because that's now an option, and like I said, it's not a huge amount of kids, but it is some. So, I am very grateful that this is happening. I think finally, honestly.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Sure.
Fundraising, as far as, do they fundraise at all for that $3,000? Do you know?
Oh, I don't know. I don't have that.
Is that here somehow or some way?
I don't, I don't have that offhand. The conversations that I had with them were, you know, all of the ice fees and the uniforms and the gear would get covered by that fee.
And I would think fundraising, it's their team, they're fundraising, so that's...
Well, that's going to include our five kids.
If we had five.
Right, right.
But I mean, they know that going into it, I would think.
Well, no, I just, you know, we've been, had that conversation on sports, about we're going to offer and things like that.
But this is the club.
I know.
I think fundraising coming back here, like, be if those kids are selling...
Yeah, whatever.
Cards. Those are going to sell to people in the area.
Is that something we would approve or not approve? I mean, what if it's something that we don't agree with as far as a fundraiser? I mean, I just, us and some ideas.
Do we normally approve fundraisers? I don't think we do. Yeah, we don't normally approve or disapprove fundraisers.
That's true.
They probably have their own...
Right, and you have, you have like students within the district that fundraise for all kinds of things that are in the school facility and throughout their stuff, so...
I do want to ask though, Preston, like, so do they normally do tournaments? And is that something that we would have to compensate us on for?
Yeah, so there is some, there is some travel with it. And that would be one of the things that with this being new water for, I think, all of us, is we would have to, have to set that...
Probably something with travel. Yes, this is Lance Cruz's team. So, it falls under Lance Cruz's policies.
And responsibilities.
Their responsibility. So, well, and it's, it is their team, so it's all they're sharing. It, it wouldn't be if they're going to an overnight for them to come here. First, first of all, overnight sports that are part of their season, like when our teams have made it to state and so on, we've, we've, it's just part of the process. They go, we get the budgets over. This is a Lance Cruz team, so it's not a funding source for our district. So, again, they have to follow Lance Cruz's policies and procedures. We would know about it, because we would know, because there could be a reason that we're going to have to excuse students for, just like we do now for other, for sports activities that they're not in school for.
So, then to answer my question is, we wouldn't have to approve those types of trips? Then that would be up to Lance Cruz to do that? And then they would have to follow their rules, they'd be under their liability umbrella all of that?
Correct. We would just, we would know it because we would have that schedule. And I would make sure that with any trip where they're traveling or having to leave early, that I get that information as early as possible, so I can communicate that out to the teaching staff. Hey, these kids aren't going to be here today because it's hockey. And again, that's a, that's a hockey thing. So...
The, the only challenge that I see is in the scheduling impressive, I've talked about it, that their sixth hour may be an online course.
A Michigan virtual.
A Michigan virtual. Because their practice starts at 3:30.
I think it was 3:15. Yeah.
And so, to get them out of here and then down safely.
So, they're not...
So, an online gives us a little more flexibility to get them out of school earlier, so they're not missing a whole lot of instruction. Again, we'd be dealing with those kinds of...
They would, they would know that that's our responsibility.
And that would, I would communicate that to the parents right away.
Yes.
This is something that, although it's a winter sport, I plan I get these signups like as soon as I can in September, so we can get all of that rolling, make sure that scheduling's taken care of, and even identifying these kids in, in August, so that we can take care of all of that. And then, like Mr. Wormsley said, get those kids a Michigan virtual class or some, or maybe they've got a, maybe they're, they've got AIS and they've got a zero hour and something there, then it wouldn't matter, so... Something I'm excited about, I'm, I'm thankful for the, the staff at Lance Cruz that kind of pushed me with this, like, "Hey, how's that going up?" Because I was just like, "Oh, you know, you know." And then, you know, as it started to roll, I, I think this will be a really good thing for the district, so...
Is there a age group that they're looking at?
High school. This would strictly be high school.
But I mean, any high school, freshmen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone have any other questions? Thank you, Kristen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our superintendent district and legislative update. Mr. Wormsley?
Yeah, I'm going to start with the bond projects are underway. Middle of July, around the 20th is our target date to have the back parking lot and the traffic circle and the parking lots of the middle school finished. When that's finished, then we'll move on to the road that runs in front of the middle school and down by the library, west side of campus. So, they are moving forward. Rain gave us a little delay, we're going to pour some of the cement today, but it's still on track and there's no worries about that at this point. District updates, I hope everybody's enjoying their summer vacation with staff and students. Ms. Kara, about how many kids are in summer school?
230 students. Been so wild.
Which, in some districts, that's larger than their elementary school or the school, so...
That's right.
Nice job with that. As far as legislative updates, still kind of quiet on the front. So, all the assumptions that we've been talking about would be our assumption, if something changes dramatically between now and June 30th, when they sign the school aid into law, we will capture that on an amendment that we do in the fall or in this winter if that change matters. But as far as legislative updates, the, last week, the prohibited subjects of bargaining passed the House and are now onto the Senate. These include items that would have to be negotiated at the expiration of contracts, such as teacher replacement, layoff and recall, et cetera. There's some where you are when a contract expires in terms of healthcare costs. Currently, some of those costs do not, the employee has to incur those or rather than the district until there's a subtle contract. So, it's going to be an interesting process. It is strictly down by party lines that the votes are, are happening. There's not much leeway, so it's going to be 100%. In this case, the Democrats voting for this for, in order for it to pass, so... The other thing that, that we're watching is the House Committee on Education is taking on, basically are taking on ORS legislation. There's a sit-out period for employees. Right now, it's nine months. They are trying to eliminate that. There's some that are trying to keep it. Our own ISD, Paul Odeya, Mike DeBald, Eric Dida from Lance Cruz, who represents the superintendent group, all testified. They, they're trying to get just a one-month sit-out. Even if districts are obligated to pay the unfunded liability for hiring retirees and paying the healthcare portion of retirees to the ORS, there's options that, that wouldn't drain the ORS system that the ISD has proposed with the teacher shortage. They're trying to come up with as many options for districts. So, stay tuned, we'll see how that, that comes.
Right, who's in favor? You said some are in favor. Do you know who the some are?
Representative Plymouth Polzar has his, his House Bill for 4752, wants to keep the month, nine months and limit compensation to only $10,000 per year. Basically, we're hiring as a sub for some days. But there's, the Office, the Director of Office of Retirement Services, Anthony Estelle, he is the one that, the Office of Retirement Service is putting up the biggest obstacle to making any legislative changes.
So, they hold a lot of weight there for these politicians?
They do, and the, the court, the US Supreme Court just also ruled against them, that the Office of Retirement Service puts out annual allowable increases in salaries. You've seen that document, I shared it with you guys in the past year. And they stated that if you give someone more than that amount, that amount can't be used in the retirement calculation, it exceeds it. The, the Supreme Court just ruled that they can't do that. If that's your compensation, that's your compensation. And that dollar value is what should be used. So, there's many administrators, even some teachers, if in this, that have filed lawsuits and that's, they've prevailed and it's filed. Now, it's probably good for these curlys, but still, they are the biggest obstacles. The concept, and I don't want to speak for them, but from what I understand... The, the concept, and, and I don't want to speak for them, but from what I understand is, you're retired, you're collecting the benefit, you would be double-dipping, so you could still collect your retirement, but yet I could pay you to be a math teacher in the district, and so you're basically getting two salaries. And the ISD's saying, with the teacher shortage, you have many teachers who are opting to retire, but are not really ready to retire, um, so they would be willing to come back, even many part-time schedules, you know, you might have two hours a day eating math teacher, someone might, who's retired, might say, I'll do a couple hours a day, but they've limited this, so the concept is, from their end, is you're double-dipping. So the ISD's proposed, if we would have had to pay a healthcare for you hired, we'll pay the healthcare cost of the, of retirees, um, to, to allow them to be able to come back, so. Particularly, because we're all facing those critical needs positions, and they're just, there's not enough people exiting the colleges to fill the potential bases, math, science, specialized counselors, which is not the number of others. Good news is, Senate Bill fifty, sixty, 161, excuse me, and 162, regarding reciprocity, passed, it's on its way for the governor's signature, which basically means if you have certification in another district or another state, they're honored to have certification here, um, which is good news, because there's a lot of hurdles that, that employees who receive certification in other states had to go through. The one thing I, we are, at least on my radar, is, um, there's a series of bills, Senate Bill 129, 131, 130, 131, and 132, all deal with the Brown's Field redevelopment, that they have given tax credits which reduce significant amount of revenue that's going into the school aid, so, um, there's still enough money, uh, in the school aid to adequately support the schools, but, um, these are, when they pass stuff like this, it now dwindles that revenue going in on a long-term basis.
Well, we have a lot of it.
Um, that, those, all those bills pass and are expected to go to the government for their signature. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, so I got some interest from the board. Candace?
Um, yeah, I just, I want to say thank you to Sandy, and Margaret, and Angela, and Deb, and everyone back here for all your time, um, and effort and, um, kind of getting me up to speed this year. It's been, it's been a long year, I've learned a lot of new things, and, um, with all you guys' help, I really, I really appreciate it, all the time you guys do, too, and I feel very confident moving forward with our board and, you know, for the next five years, um, that we can tackle any challenge that comes our way, um, as long as we stay open-minded and keep our communications open and, yeah, so that's what I wanted to say, it's a big thank, and it's just been a lot this year, and so, thank you guys. Angela, you too.
Yours not over.
Thank you.
Sandy?
Yeah, so, um, I just want to talk a little bit about the Northern Education Foundation and their Hall of Honor. Um, I know, I don't think that's necessarily up and running just yet, but it will be soon, um, where you can nominate an individual, the Hall of Honor, which is for the academics, you kind of partner with the athletics and their Hall of Fame, um, but, uh, the Education Foundation actually is going to be in, I guess, control, for lack of a better term, of the Hall of Honor, um, portion of it, um, and you can get, you'll be able to get the nomination forms online, you'll be able to submit the form online, or you can print it out, type it out, write it out, and you can mail it in either way. Um, there is, like, you know, a certain criteria for a nomination and things like that, uh, you can also, that will also be on the school's website, but I did want to say a little quick something about it, because, um, just to be looking for it, because we, the Hall of Honor nominations will need to be in by August 15th, um, so hoping that it will be up and running by early next week, fingers crossed, no promises.
A little bit of a bit of a.
Okay, um, but if anybody has any questions about that, um, you know, feel free to, um, email the Education Foundation or me personally, and I will try to get you in the right direction.
Are you still, are you the president?
No, I, no, I'm the secretary here as well. This is, I'm the president of the foundation. She, this is Sandy's, um, project, but, this is she, this is a, she, not just me. She's responsible for working with it and getting some information.
Thank you. Kelly?
No, I don't have anything today.
Angela?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Margaret?
No, I'm all set.
I too am all set, so no. Okay, next item on our agenda is our public comments. Since the last board meeting, the board received one email from a parent regarding the kindergarten course, and Mrs., I can't remember her name, Stables answered the email. We received another email from a parent who had an issue with a board member, and that board member replied. Received, we received an email from a teacher resigning, um, which was a positive email and, and just explained her part, um, which I did reply to. Um, the board received another email from a player regarding their transcripts, and Mr. Thiel, you know, answered that email. Um, I'd like to make one statement regarding our public comments from the last meeting. Uh, we had an individual made a statement regarding our comment, um, about concern about the quality of teachers at the district's hiring. I wish to inform the public that all our teachers are qualified to teach, we are required by the state, have certified teachers working with our students. I have personally met with some of our new hires and have heard many positive comments about those that we hired since January. I'd also like to address the fact the same person stated that they, as retired teachers, felt bullied and harassed while working at Richmond. I just have one question for them, what did they do about it? Uh, we have board policy on both topics and, uh, plan to address those issues. Um, as of this time, Mr. Wombley and I have talked about this, and neither one of us has heard or received anything or provided any examples of bullying or harassment to our staff. This time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? Being no public comments, we will move on to our action items. Looking for the approval of the fiscal 2023 general fund final budget and fiscal 2024 general fund original budget. Mr. Wombley?
I, I don't think we need to do that, because we just have the presentations, right?
Don't we have to approve these?
Well, yeah, but shouldn't we just ask for a motion, we just had the hearing?
Okay, I, I, that's usually where Mr. Wombley uses his statement. I'm fine with not hearing it, is the board, I'm, I'm not saying I don't want to hear, but I'm saying we just literally, I know, had the presentation, usually we do it, I'm going to spend two weeks, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to overstep, I just thought it would be more simple. Okay.
I'll just say you got a presentation from Tammy tonight that gives the final 23 budget and the beginning of 24, which is exactly what we've been talking about for the last six weeks.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the, um, FY 2023 general fund final budget and the FY 2024 general fund original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of, our next item is approval of the fiscal 2023 debt fund final budget and fiscal 2024 debt fund original budget.
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the fiscal year 2023 debt fund final budget and fiscal year 2024 debt fund original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, to Candace, continue. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the approval of the fiscal 2023 food service fund final budget and fiscal 2024 food service fund original budget.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the fiscal year 2023 food service fund final budget and fiscal year 2024 food service fund original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the approval of the fiscal 2023 student school activity fund final budget and fiscal 2024 student school activity fund original budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the FY 2023 student school activity fund final budget and FY 2024 student school activity fund original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the approval of a contract with AIS for the heavy equipment operating course.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement with AIS for the 2023-24 school year to offer the course heavy operating equipment for which funding from the 2023-24 general fund is authorized.
Support. Any discussion?
Brian, I just have one question, I'm looking at paper where we don't have an amendment there yet, it said to be negotiated.
There, Mel came in, it's a hundred and five thousand, slightly up in that major, so they, we do, we do it theirs.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for the approval of a contract with the city of Richmond for the television and broadcast media one and two courses.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with the city of Richmond for the 2023-24 school year to offer the course Television and Broadcast Media one and two, for which funding from the 2023-24 general fund is authorized.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? Same question there.
This, this, this one we have not yet received in line, I don't anticipate it to be much different than what we paid this year, but we have not gotten a call from the city yet.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the approval of a contract with the Richmond Lennox Ambulatory Services for Emergency Medical Tech EMT Course.
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with the Richmond Lennox Ambulatory Services for the 2023-24 school year to offer the course Emergency Medical Technician EMT, for which funding from the 2023-24 general fund is authorized.
Do I have support? Any discussion?
Uh, this particular one we got an email, it's the same cost as this, as last year, they're keeping the cost the same.
Any discussion or any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the approval of a contract with Dick Huber for Automotive Technology Course.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with the Dick Huber Chrysler Dodge Jeep and R and D dealership for the 2023-24 school year to offer the course Automotive Technology, for which funding from the 2023-24 general fund is authorized.
Support. Any discussion?
Uh, this particular one we do not get any cost from Dick Huber.
Any dis, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the approval of a school bus purchase.
Uh, this particular purchase, um, this is actually a bus that is on the lot, so it will arrive probably the same time the other two that you purchased last year.
Last year?
Will be arriving, so, um, though the starting price of this was higher, when you look at the bottom line, the end product of $129,375, they have the lowest price of the Midwest.
Looking for a motion?
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of one school bus from Midwest Transit for a total not to exceed $129,375, as outlined in the attached documentation, for which funding transferred from the fiscal year 2024 general fund to the non-bond capital projects fund is authorized.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. I'm looking for the approval of the Michigan High School Athletic Association 2023-24 membership resolution.
This is a yearly, uh, thing we do to allow our teams to participate in post-high school sports.
Looking for a motion?
I motion to accept nomination of the superintendent and approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association membership resolution for the 2023-24 school year as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for approval of preventative maintenance agreement and facility service agreement with Control Solutions.
I'm looking for a question.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm very, I'm sorry. Um, this is an annual contract that we have been doing since our bond in 14, we hire a company to do our preventative maintenance, repairs on our, our heating and cooling units, uh, it is a certified, uh, heating and cooling person, which we do not have in, on-site or in-house. Um, this particular contract, last year we went with Synergy, um, there was a lapse during the year with Synergy in terms of a certified person, um, so we are recommending going with Control Solutions. The personnel that does the service on our equipment is the same, it's the same gentleman, he's been doing it since 2014, when he was with Metro Controls, Synergy, and now he's with this Control Solution. There were some management organizational issues that were going on with Synergy behind the scenes that we weren't part of, so, um, the contract is, uh, $55,000 for the 23-24 school year, um, the proposal in your backup has a three-year, this is something I bring to the board every year, so I'm recommending you approve it each year, because at any time that you could switch, you could choose to hire in-house, um, but it means you're signing a contract with them for them to provide us not only the preventative, but also the proactive maintenance repair work.
I have a motion.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Control Solutions Incorporated for the total of $55,729 for preventative maintenance and facility service for which funding from the 2023-24 general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Sandy?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
I go aye, motion carries. Looking for the approval of a resolution to lay off Richmond non-union employee.
So this is a reduction of, of the alternative education position, as in our budget discussions we talked about, um, the number of students that we need for this, this particular room, um, has dropped dramatically in scheduling for the 23-24 school year. Um, oftentimes, this room is used when the board has to, a long-term suspend or expel a student. If that's the case, then we would be utilizing either our building substitutes to house that room or a new staff member, so we would still be able to have that option as a board to place students in long-term. Do we have any going forward?
Looking for a motion?
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached resolution and lay off the non-union employee as indicated and outlined in the attached resolution.
Do I have support? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep, great.
All those in favor?
One quick thing, um, this individual that's affected, we do have an open pair of open positions, and we'll be offering that position to that person, so, they have the option of choosing it or not, choosing it. choosing it or not choosing it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for the approval of exempt and non-union three-year individual contracts.
These are contracts for individuals that do not follow their collective bargaining agreement. In previous discussions with the board, we talked about rate increases in the budget, line items, some of them being in the 3% range, others in different ranges. So these are all the non-union and exempt employee contracts.
Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the three-year contracts for exempt and non-union employees and positions as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Angela, too. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the approval of the Michigan High School Athletic Association Cooperative Agreement for Ice Hockey with Lance Cruz.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association and MHSAA Cooperative Agreement for Ice Hockey with Lance Cruz as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the approval of a band choir overnight extended student trip request to Chicago.
You approved it at the last board meeting, but it was for high school. As an email, I kind of hold the board, nobody had any objection, so we expanded it to middle school. So this is just your formal approval to include middle school students.
I'm looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve an amendment to the already over-approved overnight trip request by Stacy Thor middle school and high school choir director and Malachiack Middle School and High School band director to include middle school band and choir students as well as high school students. The board approved overnight trip was for band and choir students to attend the clinic at Vanderbilt College of Music and to attend a musical in Chicago, Illinois from November 3rd, 2023 to November 4th, 2023.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for the approval of security cameras and installation.
This is the sort of phase in of our, of our technology and security. There were areas that are on the exterior, primarily the middle school, that are not covered by camera. This would make sure the majority of our campus is covered by cameras. And then, once these are installed, we'll see how the actual lens captures you and we do another evaluation of our campus.
Looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase, installation, and licenses for 21 cameras for a total not to exceed $24,690.54, for which the FY 24 general fund is authorized as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. This will be a roll call vote. Wait, I have, oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Sorry, Margaret.
Just, just so I know that I'm, when I'm looking at this, where the arrows are, that's what's telling me, like, that's the cameras are going in that direction, what they're looking at, and where the arrows are are where the cameras are.
That's where the new cameras are going, yes. What you don't see is where the current coverage is.
No, I just want to make sure, as I was looking at, that I got what the, okay, thank you.
Wait, this will, any other discussion?
So, so some of these gaps on here, if we're looking at the picture, we may already have current camera coverage in those areas.
Any further discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Angela?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Need no further business. The board will adjourn at 7:53. Thank you, everyone.